Sometimes it'll update itself.
Anybody want to lead us in prayer?
I will. Father, I just want to thank you, your Lord, for this day. Just thank you for the rain that you sent our way, dear Lord. I pray that if it's, uh, you see fit, that it would, uh, that you would send more rain our way, dear Lord. Thank you for the blessings you give to us. I pray to the Lord especially for the government here, dear Lord. Be with them then as they make decisions today. I pray to the Lord for the, uh, government, dear Lord, that you will be with the problems that exist there. I pray to the Lord for our military, protect them, guide them, and our first responders and law enforcement, keep them safe, dear Lord. I thank you for all that you do, and I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Would you want me to pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We're in a regularly scheduled Eastland County Commission's Court meeting. It is October the 12th, just after nine o'clock. All commissioners, county judges present, so we do have a quorum also at the table, or county clerk, and, uh, Assistant County Auditorium of Sonia is here. So we have read and signed the minutes. Let's see, we've got several sets of minutes here. All right, we've got a set of minutes from September 27th at nine o'clock, minutes from October the 1st at 1:15, and minutes from October the 7th at 1:15. Do you want to have any questions or comments? Okay, none? Can we have a motion to accept those three sets of minutes as presented?
Second.
And if you made second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same time, and that carries. All right, that takes part number two. Discuss, consider presentation of healthcare freedom and the role of local government, presented by Ruth York. Now I have a message that Ruth is, uh, running a little late today. She also has item number three, which is discuss, consider presentation of the Omega Brief by Ruth York. So, uh, let's hold on those, and we'll go down here to number four. And when Ms. York comes in, then we can get that set up for one, uh, get set up for two and three. Number four is discuss, consider proposed, pending contracts, agreements. There aren't any presented to me besides those that are already in the folder now. Anybody else have a contract, an agreement to present today? Okay. Number five is a 911 update, property dispatch update. Uh, Jason, anything on dispatch?
I don't have anything today, Your Honor, just business as usual right now.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything on, uh, your minds for dispatch or cooperative for 911? All right, nothing on that then. On item number six, discuss, consider establishing a donation account for Ken Maltby Memorial. Uh, Brad Stevenson, our district attorney, was going to talk to us about setting up a donation account. You might have remembered that, of course, Ken Maltby was killed several years ago on a, on the road out, uh, right off of 441, 442. And that road has been named in his honor, but the sign's not put up because the sign has to have private donations to build the sign and put it out there. And, uh, I got word late last week that we don't need to take any action on this because some anonymous donor has paid for all costs for the sign, everything that goes with it, which is several thousand dollars. Jason, you know anything about that happening out there?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, of course, it was approved through the legislature this last session, the name of the Ken Maltby Memorial Highway. Um, the, the signs, that doesn't include the, the cost of the signs, which costs five thousand something, something dollars. Um, but, uh, we were, we were starting the process of raising money to do that, and we had an anonymous donor donate the entire amount. So that'll be taking place here.
Good deal. All right, good deal. So we don't need any action then on item number?
No, sir.
Six. So item number seven, discuss, consider joining with the Office of the Attorney General of Texas in a proposed opioid settlement agreement and adopt the Texas term sheet. This is something Sheriff Wager brought to me, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I guess. And then I went to a, a board meeting at the Cog, and they said almost exactly the same thing that Sheriff Wager did. Sheriff Wager, you want to bring us up to date on what that is?
Well, guys, I'm not a lawyer and don't know all lawyer jargon on this, but, uh, apparently, uh, there was a large, um, legal action taken against several pharmaceutical companies that resulted in several billion dollars. I think y'all discussed this previously a while back, but, um, as part of that, uh, they've, they've reached a settlement, and each state has to agree to be in on the settlement, which Texas has done so. And then each entity has to agree to be part of that as well, and the more entities that are, are part of that, the more money the Texans will give. Um, it has to do with opioids and, and, and all the money has to go towards some type of opioid, uh, benefit, uh, to benefit the county, uh, uh, for the reduction of it and, uh, and to handle, uh, medical and, and MXMR and services and education and stuff like that. Um, as part of, if we agreed to do it, um, then our part would be, uh, sixty, hang on, I wrote it, sixty-three thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Now, what I don't know, and it, and it's, there's three big payments, and then, uh, residual payments for eighteen years. Uh, what I don't know, and you may have, you may have, uh, found out more, is, is the sixty-three thousand the total over eighteen years, or is it?
I think that's the maximum recoverable amount, depending on how many people, how many counties, cities, and all join in.
Right.
I think that would be the most we'd ever get, would be sixty-three thousand. Kind of like the tobacco settlement we got years and years ago.
Right.
It slowly trickles in, then it's just about gone now.
Well, my thought is, is that, uh, the, the AG's office is asking for, for entity support on this, and there's no reason in the world not to. We, we see it all the time over in the jail. Uh, we have medical expense from it, from the jail. Um, we have medical expense out in the field. We, we all use Narcan. We all have to go through Narcan training. We're all currently doing that stuff, and if we can recover some of the costs of that, um, then I'm all for it. You know, if they're, if they're gonna offer it, I think we should take it personally. There's no, there's not much involvement other than some, some paperwork, to my understanding, uh, to get this accomplished. It's pretty broad. It's, it's, uh, there's a whole long booklet of stuff that it can be used for, um, but it all pretty much pertains to training, uh, medical, I mean, it can be used for canine services, stuff like that, too. Um, so, anyway, I would like your consideration on it.
Okay, and a couple of years ago, we brought this through Commissioners' Court, and at the time, we were asked to join in with a, a class action lawsuit against the pharmaceutical companies. And Russ and I talked about it, and, and Russ said, and I brought it to Commissioners' Court, that we weren't sure how much damages this actually had caused. You're gonna have to do a prove-up on the damages at that point, and that was gonna be a, a long, hard process to determine to the dollar or close to it what kind of losses we actually had from the jail, from officers, and from our initial healthcare that we have across, uh, the county. And then so when I was at that meeting at the Cog, I asked one of the Attorney General, uh, staff members that were there about the prove-up on the damages, and she said there's not gonna be a requirement to prove actual damages to our county. And we don't have to calculate opioid expenses, uh...
They use a calculation based off of, of population, area, and stuff like that. They have some kind of formula that they use that is already determined.
And then this, this kind of goes to your question, uh, the calculation of the payment amount to our county, how did they come up with that? And their answer was, potential maximum payment to each county was calculated using several metrics such as population, amount of opioids prescribed, and sold given area, overdose deaths, and other factors. Our amount can also vary depending on how many counties, cities, and other political subdivisions join OAG. And then my last question was the eligible uses of the funds that we'll receive. And the, uh, OAG's office said the eligible use of funds received have not been finalized. The stated goals, which is just what Sheriff Wager just said, is to use the funds to support strategies to fight opioid crisis. So Sheriff thinks it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. I, I hope y'all agree. They say if we want to join, all we've got to do is sign onto the settlement and execute releases and execute the Texas term sheet. So at this point, anybody have any questions or comments? I think I've given you all information that I would receive or that Jason had.
They will come and do a present, full-blown presentation for us if, if we want to. I don't know if it's necessary, but they will, if y'all want more.
They, they made a very good case for signing on with the OAG and getting the wheels running on that.
I'll make the motion, Judge, and allow you to sign whatever is necessary to join them.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to, uh, join the settlement, execute the Texas term sheets. Let me sign whatever needs to be signed to process this agreement with the OAG for opioid settlement. All in favor, say aye. Any ayes as well. All right.
Thank you, John.
I will get all that signed and get you a copy of it as well, Sheriff. And, of course, Kathy, get you a copy, too.
Okay.
Okay, and Ruth York is here. How are you doing? Ruth York, we skipped over yours, but we'll come back up to it now. If we can, gentlemen, let's go back up to item number two. Discuss, consider presentation of healthcare, freedom, and the role of local government. Uh, is this something you need to plug in yet, or?
No.
Okay. Are you going to need to plug in a computer to that? Okay. For this one, or the other one, anything?
I'm sorry?
Y'all got a video or anything?
No.
Okay, all right, good deal.
Um, I do want to pass these around. If I could actually start with the second item first, is that all right?
Okay, we'll go to item number three then. This is discuss and consider presentation of the Omega Brief by Ruth York.
And do I have enough copies for everyone?
I'll bet you did. We can share one here. She, she'll need one to put into the file.
Okay. Let me wave it around for just a moment, and I can see.
Okay, and you're, yeah, please have a seat if you want to.
Well, that'd be great, thank you.
How are you today?
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for making accommodations.
Sure, sure. Well, Commissioner Raines called and said you wanted to be on the agenda, and I thought that'd be a good idea.
Well, my name is Ruth York, as you know. I'm a resident of Eastland County, and I request the delivery of this, uh, notice to be included in the minutes. As our county elected officials, you have received a copy of the Omega Brief today that has been delivered to every Texas House Representative and State Senator, Lieutenant Governor, the Governor, and the Attorney General. This document contains irrefutable evidence of COVID pandemic criminal activity, conspiracy, and racketeering identified in patent filings by David Martin, Ph.D. Criminal charges are being filed for using the flawed PCR testing responsible for the gross overstatement of positive COVID cases. We know the contents of this brief and are excited and grateful for the clarity this information brings to the COVID chaos that we have all suffered from in one form or another. We hope and pray this information aids in your duty and oath to defend the U.S. Constitution and uphold our laws by using your power and authority to seek avenues to help prosecute guilty parties. And most of that won't fall on your shoulders, but my purpose in bringing it to you today is, again, if we're talking about making policy, which y'all do, you have to from time to time do that. You need to be aware that what has happened to us over the past nineteen months is based on fraudulent information. That means that some of the policies that we decided upon as a nation, a state, even at a county level, weren't the best policies. Uh, so first of all is to establish, is I hope you will, as you look through these pages, that there was criminal activity going on. We made SARS and patented it in April 19, 2002. Okay, that's a pretty shocking statement. You know, there's been some discussion, and at times that discussion was actually squelched. Was this created in a lab, or was it naturally occurring? Well, that's a big, big question. But we are seeing evidence in the documents that this was created purposely in a lab. Uh, they took a natural virus and did gain-of-function research to bring it up to a bioweapons raid that will be transmissible from human to human intentionally. Whether they intended it to be used militarily and it escaped accidentally, or whether it was purposely released, I don't know. But, uh, of course, we've had criminal activity, just in the sense that they denied that it was created in a lab. Uh, we have, you know, the discussion between Senator Rand Paul and Dr. Fauci on that question. And again, the documents clearly indicate that it, that it was. So my purpose in bringing it to you again is so that you will be aware, as you move forward with policy decisions. Just yesterday, I understand, the Governor released, uh, an executive order saying there will be no forced vaccinations, right, by any entity in the state, and I appreciate that. But we might have a different Governor next year than what happens. So what I want to remind you of then, moving on to the second part of this presentation, is that, is that, um, your role is sometimes to come between the citizens and, uh, the higher powers of government. There are times when, and, you know, a law is not a just law. And then I see your responsibility as protecting us from that, not making that worse, right? Um, that is not a concept that we talk about a lot in, in today's political environment. But we are not to have, uh, you know, the Constitution was written to protect the individual citizens. We, the people, that document throughout was intended to be a manual of how the individual liberties were to be protected. Uh, it wasn't written for we, the businesses, or we, the governors, or whatever, right? Um, so I think it's very important to keep in mind that the ultimate responsibility is to protect both freedoms, not even the medical safety of people, but the liberties and freedoms of the individual citizens. I want to talk a little bit about the, um, how this brief came to be. In August, a lady in Brady assembled this information and began to share it again at the State Capitol. And then she was looking at the twenty-four, two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties and thinking, we need this information there, too. That was too much. She did a lot just in assembling this information. So she reached out to others to cover their individual counties, so that's why I'm here today. Um, it's based primarily on the, an interview between a Dr. Martin Fauci, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Martin, who discusses Fauci, uh, Dr. Fauci, uh, the patents and so forth. And so this is very high-quality evidence when you're talking about government records, like patents, that are dated and filed. You know, they're written by lawyers with great care. So this presents a very solid evidential record. And, um, we need to be aware of it as we move forward, of course, depending on what happens. But again, when we think about some of the things that we have gone through, um, in recent times, one thing that, uh, has struck me is the, from the beginning, they have said there was no treatment for this disease. Actually, they've known since 2005 that hydroxychloroquine works against this virus. When you go back through some of these records, you see that there were experiments establishing that. So why was it suppressed? It turns out that in order to have an experimental use authorization on a vaccine, they must have no other alternative treatment available. Okay, if there's a good you, good treatment available, you don't need the vaccine. So it, as things popped up, said the budesonide that Dr. Richard Bartlett and Odessa discovered, uh, the ivermectin that's become an issue recently, as these things were, you know, came to light, they were squelched. And again, why would, why didn't they say, let's check it out, let's take a look? But that was not the approach of the government. They were saying, no. People died because these were not available. Uh, just recently, it's been charged that over a hundred members of Congress have gone to these frontline doctors to get these treatments, very quietly, very quietly recovered, very quietly said nothing. To me, that is also criminal. If these treatments work for them, but they won't defend them to the public, why? Why can we not use those treatments? Again, there's so many questions that come up when you look at some of the, uh, specific circumstances that we have, uh, we have been through over the past nineteen months. Um, if I may, I would like to share this with you, and again, I may not have got a lot of number of copies.
We can make some more if you need some.
Okay, this is not so extensive, only four pages, so. There's one more, uh, no. Yes, one more. This was just a list that I made of things that raised questions in my mind, okay?
And this is item number two, which is discuss, consider presentation of healthcare, freedom, and the role of local government. And we'll kind of roll them all together, but go ahead.
Okay, so the, um, one small example was the one I just mentioned, you know, if, if it benefited members of Congress, why are they not willing to share that information across the nation? You would think they'd want to blast it out to everyone, uh, which I appreciate Senator Hall in the Texas Senate, because he's been doing that. He's been holding, uh, Facebook events, speaking out, uh, you know, at, at actual events to, to say there, there are cures, there are resources we have to treat these, and we need to treat them immediately. It's very rare, I don't know of any other disease, that they're gonna say, just wait, let's see how this goes, right? And then if you get bad enough, come back. If they have treatments that could head it off, minimize the damage, that seems like that would be the natural course to follow. Um, another thing is, just, you know, some of those that seem elementary, such as social distancing, masking, uh, having only very small groups, family groups primarily assemble. You know, those are things everyone could do, and we did. Um, don't know if it had any impact, or if it had a positive impact. But what strikes me is, if they were effective, and the people who instituted those rules believed it was effective, why didn't they do it? And they pretended to, on camera. But again, you see the Governor of California having a big bash at the French Laundry Restaurant with his friends, actually in contravention of his own rules. Just recently, the Met Gala, uh, thirty thousand dollars a plate, right? But the, um, servers were the only ones wearing masks. So it, again, if, if it was so crucial and actually made a difference, these people wouldn't ever be caught without their mask, right? Or social distancing, or they're small groups. We see that just repeated throughout this, um, nineteen months. People in power making the rules and breaking them. That tells me they are not scared of the virus, right? So again, we, it started out with a very hyped, uh, explosive model that turned out to be totally false, apparently. How did that come to be the mainstream logic of how this was to be handled, or what, what they were forecasting? He was never willing to share his, uh, research so that they could check that his figures, but they were, many times, what was, uh, proved to be the case. Um, so this is just a little more information about the, how to handle a situation where the, uh, what you're told to do doesn't match with the Constitution. And that puts you in a very difficult position, and I know you may have come to this job intending to fix roads and bridges. But, uh, there may be a time when, you know, what is your position gonna be if, uh, President Biden says you must be vaccinated to go to the grocery store? You'll be arrested if you're on the streets and you're not vaccinated. You can't go here or there without a passport. I'm asking you sincerely to think about what will you do? Will you institute that mandate on citizens who should have free right to choose what's put in their bodies? Especially considering that this is an experimental, unproven, brand-new technology. Uh, I might just mention the airline pilots that were, you know, you see that they're striking or taking vacation or whatever. These are people that are highly trained. They fly these multi-million dollar machines loaded with hundreds of passengers. Southwest Airlines can trust them with all that, and they can't trust them to make one medical decision for themselves? Why? You look at how this vaccine is being pushed. It's not just being offered here. Here's the reasons you should take this, and we made it free. They're offering bribes to people. Well, I think in Austin, you get fifty dollars if you go and get the shot. It's become counter, you would think, manipulative, let's say that at the least, the different things that they have been offering as incentives to people to get the vaccination. If it makes sense, let me see the evidence and make the decision. And when they're pushing it to the extreme they are, you have to question why. So basically, that is my position, and I, I sincerely hope that you will take this information. There's a lot there, but especially listen to the interview between Dr. Martin and, uh, and Mr. Fulmich, uh, a German lawyer, also licensed to practice in California. But, uh, their interview is the basis for this document, and you can listen to that in your truck or whatever. So again, I appeal to you to, if necessary, and I hope it does not become that, to be a barrier that protects the people of Eastland County.
You want us to accept this in to the records, right? I mean, that was kind of part of it, sure.
Yes.
I watched when Burnett County did that, so.
Yes, great, yes. Hopefully, two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties will get this information.
Takes a while to get across the state of Texas.
That's right, yes. So far, we know that Breckenridge has, uh, Shackelford County has, uh, to my knowledge, and as you mentioned, Burnett, um, somewhere down in the valley.
It all good.
It all good. So, again, it's, it's something that you are in a position to be able to protect the people, and I hope that you will do that.
Okay, well, Ruth, very well researched, very well presented. Uh, gentlemen, on item two and three, any questions or comments for Ruth?
No, I'll make the motion we accepted. It didn't fit the minutes.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second to accept in both presentations that Ruth York made here today. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye as well, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Acceptance in, and thank you for the work that you did on getting that to us. This, this whole thing has been so politicized, weaponized, whatever you want to call it. It's just, it's difficult to discern where the truth is in the middle of all of it.
That's very true, yes. Uh, it's reached a point where we...
There's so much flip-flopping at the federal level, it's hard to get your handle, handle around it.
Right, that's true. Great. And the statistics, uh, you doubt the statistics now when they change the way they report deaths or change the cycles that they're going to use on their PCR test. So, yes, it does become very...
Yeah, I, I saw today where Executive Order 40 from Greg Abbott, uh... Yeah, I, I saw today where Executive Order forty from Greg Abbott, uh, said that you can't do a vaccination requirement, and I, I don't know, you know, the federal and the state government, sometimes they butt heads, and I think it'll have to be probably resolved in federal court. That could take years before that's done, or they could fast track it. But, uh, uh, I guess we'll see where that turns out.
Right. It is a discussion that I think is going to consume the nation. Okay, thank you so much.
It's, it's a bad thing, thanks for bringing it to us.
Good work.
Anybody else have any comments or questions or anything on either of Ruth's presentations? Anything to add? Thank you, Ruth.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I will get you email your copies.
Okay.
For your file.
All right, good deal. Do you have both of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good deal. All right, that takes us then, we've gotten one through seven. Item eight is discuss, consider entering into an MOU with Abilene Recovery Council. This is our annual MOU with Abilene Recovery Council, uh, in their efforts to assist individuals and families with substance misuse issues. This is a contract that we have with them, it doesn't cost the county anything, it just says that we will use them as a resource for, uh, sending people to this, uh, outreach screening and assessment program that Abilene Recovery Council puts together each year. So with that, may I have the authority enter into this contract and sign it with Abilene Recovery Council?
Motion.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
And aye as well. Okay, Kathy, I'll get that signed and get it back to you. I may not have enough copies for everybody. All right, that takes us to item number nine. Discuss, consider approving, executing contracts from entities for dispatch services and for rural fire suppression. Uh, we have gotten all the dispatch entities contracts sent out. We've gotten all the VFW entities contracts sent out. The two EMS contracts have been sent out. We've already signed the one with Eastern Cooperative with a hospital. I've sent the other one out to Ranger. And the first one that's come back in here is Olin. So I have Olin VFD with a firefighting contract that's been sent in, uh, after y'all gave me the authority to send all these out to everyone. So with that, can I have the authority, uh, enter into this, and the county enter into the agreement with Olin VFD for a firefighting contract?
Motion.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. And I'll keep this on the agenda till we get everything back on the dispatch entities and all the other VFDs, that'll be the first, and we'll have seven more VFDs. Okay. And on number ten, update on the county, is it something?
I was looking for Matt, it says to get him a copy.
Well, he left, he had to go somewhere.
Do you know his address?
Uh, don't, but I can drop it off by the fire station.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, they probably have a drop box, I don't know for sure, but.
I was working for Daryl, military ranger.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Item number ten is up down the county burn ban. Of course, we have the burn ban on, and I've got, uh, seven tenths of an inch rain, Sunday night, I guess it was. Seven, seven tenths.
I've had several call on the burn huts.
Did we get enough rain across the county to take it off? Jemal, what do y'all think?
Supposed to rain tonight, too.
Yeah.
Anybody else get any, uh, rains over the weekend besides my seven tenths?
About half an inch.
Half an inch.
Yes, sir.
Four tenths, raining.
When is our next meeting? The twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
That'll be two weeks with the burn ban off if we take it off today. Unless we have one of those quick emergency meetings like y'all like to have. Try to have one on a Friday or something. So.
That's a threat, by the way, on your end, you got that.
No, I'm just laying it all out there, I want you to have it, understand it. So, does anybody want to make a motion to take the burn ban off?
Can't make the motion.
Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, is that effective immediately?
Yes.
We've got a motion and a second to remove the burn ban effective immediately. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well, all right? So that'll be unanimous. Would you draft me up one to remove the burn ban, please, effective immediately?
Did you vote, Judge?
I did, I voted for it, remove the burn ban. Okay. Item number eleven is personnel matters. Do we have a personnel report?
We do, this report is from September fifteenth through September thirtieth. Uh, there were two new hires, uh, and then there were two terminations, one part-time and one full-time.
Okay, Jem, you have a personnel report in front of you? Anyone else have anything to add for personnel report? All right, can we have the personnel report as presented approved?
Motion, second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. All right, item number twelve is budgetary appropriations matters. Twelve A is certification of additional revenue. Sonya, is there?
There's none.
There's not any additional revenue this time, okay. All right, that takes care of twelve A. Twelve B is emergency amendments.
There's none.
Okay. And twelve C is amendment changes by fund.
We have a report in front of you for budgetary management. It says Eastland County Public Journal. Page one, I did not put this report together, so I'm not exactly sure, I don't have the details. Um, it looks like she's just clearing up line item adjustments. Most of those look like a contingency and a recent report.
Yeah, that's the ten thousand extra to the retirement.
Well, there's possible, is it retirement?
It was retirement, she put it in the workers' comp, because that's what it got taken out of, and it was for that retirement.
So that's what she put in there, it looks like. And then the other, the rest of the pages are just line items within budget until you get to I believe this is the last page. The next to the last page is, looks like that's where she was certifying additional revenue from four, last four for the inmate and R W.
Ours has a cover sheet that's titled fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments.
Yes. Sorry, the others, no, the others, I believe, start with the second.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know what you have, I'm sorry, I did not put together.
Jem, you have any questions or comments that we might be able to possibly answer? Okay, hearing none, can we make the budget amendments and adjustments by fund as requested?
Motion, second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Hand that one to you.
There's that one, Judge.
Yep. Kathy, there's the burn ban lift, if you'll attest to it at some point.
Yes, sir.
Give it back to me, thank you. Okay, are those the only amendments?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Guess that's yours.
Is it all yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that takes us to twelve B, report of financial condition.
None, if that's not.
None today, okay. Twelve E, investment report.
None, second.
Not this time. All right, twelve F is financial reports and department reports. Sheriff, you have one to give to us today?
My name is Harris, I have a question for A.
Wait, I need to hear that.
Beth, what was that?
It's a message for Robert.
I think it was an ad in front of the video.
Oh, oh. Sheriff Wager, yes.
Everyone should have a copyright report, and I won't go through it thing by thing, but, uh, causing activities, uh, which includes a lot, most everything, five forty-three, uh, reports generators fifty-eight, cases filed with attorney, seven. No juvenile cases this month, we had twenty-one transports, um, we had a total of five thousand three hundred forty-six miles on the transports. Twenty-nine citations, thirty-three warnings, fifteen arrests, forty-nine warrants served, seventy-four civil processes served, forty-three mental health services, five mental health transports, and an average day in the jail holding of sixty-four. A couple of the, a lot of this month consisted of going to different, uh, uh, festivals around the county, there was one just about every weekend, uh, somewhere, and, and, uh, we helped out a lot of departments and stuff like that. So a lot of this month was, was done doing that. Uh, another couple of cool things we did, uh, we put in video kiosks in all of the jail cells, and, and there may be a little controversy about that, about why we're putting those in, but they were no cost to the county whatsoever. Uh, they run through the phones, the inmate phone system. And what that'll allow them to do is to do visitation, um, that way, or they can speak with their lawyers that way, they can speak with their children that way. Um, it was, uh, it's a multifaceted, uh, thing where it'll help us out with visitation and stuff like that, and it'll also help them out with their morale and, uh, keeping them, uh, kind of calm down a little bit, too. Um, it's already helped quite a bit, we've, we're also putting the commissary on there, so previously, the jailers walk around and get the commissary from each individual person and handwrite it all down and all that. Well, now they can get on there and just order their own and do all of it themselves. So that'll help alleviate some of the workload off the jailers as well. Um, it also has a law library on there, jail rules, uh, any other kind of documents or anything that we want, all the jail, all the inmates to see, we can put it on there. It's kind of a pretty robust, uh, system, it's not just for Facebook and whatever, you know, I call it Facebook, but FaceTiming, that's what I mean. Uh, so it, it's pretty cool, uh, neat little system that didn't cost us a dime. In fact, we'll make, we'll end up making some money off of it as well. Um, we get a percentage off of each one of those, uh, calls that are made, uh, just like the phone system works.
What happens if the damage, what do you mean?
Uh, the company will come in and replace it.
And charge the?
Well, not us.
The tenant, okay.
Yes, yes, we, we've actually kind of stepped up the, the game a little bit in trying to curtail some of the damage that goes on inside the jails, people tearing up stuff. And, you know, when they're torn, when they tear up something, we, we charge them, or file charges, or both. Um, I don't know that previously, to the extent that it's being done now, it was being done, but, but all I can say for is what we're doing. Um, but we're trying to curtail some of that, and we've also installed, uh, some more cameras into the jail, uh, there were several blind spots in there, um. We've, to help curtail some of the property damage, uh, that's done. And, uh, we've also put them inside of the medical cells and a couple of the psych cells. We have a lot of medical and a lot of mental health now, uh, that needs constant, uh, monitoring. So that'll help, uh, with that, uh, too. Uh, it's been, it's been a pretty good asset for us and so forth. And other than that, there's some, just little things here and there, but, uh, we've been, of course, doing our training and, and Simsick, uh, Investigator Simsick's been going to North Cog and Training Police Academy up there, uh, doing some work up there, um, he was asked, those, those, uh, pretty cool. Um, anyway, that's about it, you can read the rest. Any, any questions? It's going, it's all going good, guys, we're, we're moving, moving forward and, and, uh, trying to, trying to make progress over there, it's going good.
All right, thanks, Sheriff. All right. And, uh, let's see, I don't have the list today of the reports to send in, do you have a list that you can tell me?
I do.
Okay.
I have constables one and two, the county clerk, the sheriff's fees, district clerk, tax collector, uh, office, uh, DMV, JP's one, two, and four, and then the sheriff's monthly report, as he just gave.
All right. Jem, when you've heard the list of reports, you've heard the report from the sheriff, do we have a motion to accept those reports in as presented?
Motion.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Okay, those are in there, and item three, last item, is bills, claims, and accounts. And who's making that presentation?
We have three sets in front of you, the first set is October eighth, tables that we missed last week. Um, the second set is October eleventh, to be paid today, that's for this year twenty twenty-one. And your third set is October twelfth, also to be paid today, this year twenty twenty-two.
What are we gonna do about all this? I can't print nothing, when I access print, it locks my entire system up.
Um, I don't know, I know that some people had problems printing last week, and Amber helped several of them work through it. Uh, you might as well talk to Amber and see if she has any ideas.
I thought somebody else got them paid.
That was sent last week.
All of them were?
Are you talking about your?
The Nationwide and the Federal Credit Union and all them?
Yes, those were paid last week.
They haven't, they were already paid.
Okay, well, we'll talk to them, but, and we'll look at it from a vacancy, if I can catch them in. But those haven't been sent out.
My question is, why do we have to bring hard copies over now and pack them in there?
Because the auditor's office was printing them out and bringing them to my office. Um, they are no longer going to print them out, but we still need the paper copy because we.
I said we go back to the tear out books.
I mean, it costs, it costs us money, it's supposed to be.
We cannot accept emails between different, we can't accept emails between different departments because we have to have them printed out in order, we still have to transfer the invoice from here to here, and need the invoice number at the different departments. So I have a question.
Christine, is this, is this an intermediate problem, kind of a new software problem we're working through?
Work through it. Uh, at this point in time, this is where we're at. I don't know in the future.
You see, bring up in the future, maybe?
We're hoping so.
Okay.
Why do we have to scan them in? We've got to bring the hard copy.
Yeah.
That was my question, can you not see what we scan in to the auditor's office?
While we do the requisition and they approve the purchase order?
We still, we would have to pull up on Tuesday on hundreds of purchases.
It's costing our departments more money, more time as well. And it was my impression that we would not have to be doing that.
Everybody's impression that we would not be having to do that. But at this point in time, this is where we're at. We're hoping, I guess I'm hoping it gets better.
So who do we need to get to come sit in that chair and let me ask questions of?
Um.
Because Chris ain't coming back, I'm pretty confident.
Um, Loretta has contact information for somebody who can.
Because somebody's fixing to come sit in that chair and ask, ask questions.
We understand, we.
Twenty-fifth?
That'd be fine, that or sometime between now and then, whatever.
I mean, it literally took me four to five hours to do the requisitions.
Y'all have seen this much of what we are having to do.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's taken us two weeks to get.
Yeah, but that's not what we do, I mean, we have.
There's some kind of a software problem that they've got a bug in there that they didn't nuggle ahead, it's just not working with our, our referral system?
They're not as familiar with government dealings as they thought they were.
Okay. So we're the beta testers.
We are the beta testers.
We'll regulate her, I'm gonna test her on the beta.
See, that was not disclosed, that we are the beta side for now.
Have we ever bought any software that didn't cause a problem for a while?
There's some out there, trust me.
There's a lot, yeah.
Believe me, we have experts as.
Kim, let's see if we get somebody to come in and try to explain it.
Yeah, I might have somebody come talk to us about it. I'll try not to holler and carry them, but.
And this is coming out, blowing down that data, correct?
We're doing a lot of redundant work, as, as the guy with the biggest budget section of the, of budget, it is bogging us down, I got one, one girl that's doing it.
I turn my computer off and on every time I print something.
I can't even get to, I can't even get to the print. So, and, and we've been, that, that she's wanting, I can't even print. I can't. I can't even get to the print. So, and, and we've been, that, that she's wanting, I can't even print it. I can't even see it to print it. But it, it is causing a lot of redundancy, a lot of problems. Uh, software is supposed to make your life easier, it's supposed to make stuff from the school and all, if joined together, there's, it does not...
And it's not. It's double, triple work.
It's doubling our workload and, and...
I'm gonna see if we get somebody here from the company on the twenty-fifth to explain to us.
Or from me.
We understand, we, we're, y'all are only seeing this much of what we're seeing.
But when y'all did the demo, did y'all ask these questions come in?
We did, but they...
They soaked you a bill of goods, and, but you just bring a nice of that. But anyway, I don't have to...
Well, we've been there in two thousand nine when they sold us, and...
Yeah.
Thirty years later, we're paying a lot more money and getting zipped. I mean...
Yeah.
And it's not truly window-based because you can't open all kinds of windows. So when they sell that again this time, it's not factual.
I got a question. Christina, what do you think we ought to do about this deal? If it, I mean, 'cause it's all about you. What do you want to do? That's what I want to know, because this ain't working, it's broke.
Well, we're, we're trying to give them time, a chance to fix it.
Okay. So if it don't get fixed, or...
Oh, if it doesn't get fixed, yes.
So when are we gonna get started on that?
How many years are you giving them?
Not much. They're not very long.
Okay.
So they're working on it now to get something...
They are working on it every, all day long, every day. They're tweaking things and trying to make it to where we need it to be.
Okay. So in the future, no matter where, are we still gonna have to bring them over, or hard copies? For the moment?
I mean, if we, yeah.
For what?
That's where we're at right now. I, I don't know in the future. We would like for it to not be this way in the future, but...
Right.
Any of the purchases have to be approved by the department heads, and that's the proof. Your signature.
We sign the invoice.
Yeah, that's just... It's signed, yeah.
It's signed, so what, what else does need to be signed?
Well, for right now, the, um, I guess it's mainly the proof that we have to have the purchase order signed.
I wouldn't know. I can't print one.
It is two. I would sign them and email them to you guys.
Be easier for me to work the criminal case.
And we were paying the cost for the copies. That's changed.
Not sure what charge we could file, but we might want to talk to the person about that.
If somebody, if somebody is trying to get stuff pushed through that didn't actually, that the county didn't actually buy, I'll work that case.
That's, that's definitely a case there. I was talking about the software criminal.
It's horrible. Um...
Yeah.
Well, I'll ask Sonya to give me the best contacts she has, and we'll try to get that person, or somebody here to represent the company at the twenty-fifth.
And then one of the little gentlemen that came and installed it, my computer crashed. My employee's computer crashed. We got him back up, and I understand one other department's computer crashed after he did his whole thing.
Well, y'all remember this, the next time you want to do a software upgrade.
Don't look at me. I've got it all down.
Let's think about this long and hard. It seems there's always a problem.
Yeah, bring them in and just go through it.
Well, we bring them in, they talk to us. It sounds all rosy and blue skies and sunshine, and then after we buy it, it goes ball of wax problem. We'll see if we can get some answers on it. In the meantime, help Christina make it work. Help Sonya and her department over there make it work as well as you can. All right. With that being said, then, can we have a motion to pay the bills, claims, and accounts as presented?
Motion. Second.
Who made the motion?
I'm the one, sir.
All right. And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. And you have three of these coming your way.
Here. Buzzzy.
Buzzzy's still on there, isn't it?
Yeah.
They need to start down.
I think they like to see the presentation.
They, they would look at it, but it's good.
It was on there. It is on there.
Not just the presentation. The trend scratching people that I...
That use it, not have it, that uses it. That's the kicker.
I'll go back to it.
Yeah. And you can call references and ask the boss what he thinks about it, but they never actually uses it.
I guess Loretta did.
Maybe.
We'll have to get it fixed.
No, it still says buzzy on it.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that they cut out buzzer.
Y'all be buzzing.
Probably can't lie. Put it on there soon.
Yeah, y'all think I'm difficult, getting along with you. Y'all should make him print them. Hang on. Oh, my goodness.
All right, you have all of them?
Yes, sir.
All right. I think that's it. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Do we have a second to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned. Thank you everyone for being here.